I will go ahead and call to order our November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four city council meeting. First up is our prayer and pledge, which will be led by Hardison's volunteer coordinator, Deanna Yastabo.
That's pretty good.
Pretty close. Hardison seeks to help women break the chains of dependency and achieve self-sufficiency by providing a place for job and life skill training, career and higher education opportunities, and healthy relationships. Please stand.
Thank you. Will you join me as we pray? Father, we just lift this meeting up to you. To begin with, we want to say thank you. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to share in the government of this city. We thank you for all the men and women who, and children, and animals who live in this city, Lord. We know that you know each of us and you love each of us, and we thank you that we're able to share life together in this city. And now we ask for your wisdom and your courage to live life together in harmony, understanding and listening to one another, and making decisions about our community that please you and bless each other. We thank you for the government that you've given us in this city. We ask you to bless each one of them, both those who are immediately in the government, those who are first responders, even those policemen and women who are in this very room. Lord, we ask you to bless them with your wisdom and your courage and your strength. We ask you to give them a love first for the people of this city, and then a desire and the means to serve the people of Longview as you provide. And we ask all of this in your son Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Will you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is our consent agenda. Are there any items? Oh, I'm sorry, citizen comment. Just kidding. Next on the agenda is citizen comment. I have Audrey White. If you would please step up to the podium.
I tried, yeah. Ready?
Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address, and then you've got three minutes.
Audrey White, and it's thirty-two eleven South Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard, Longview, Texas. I came to speak today, number one, governmental abuse of power. It is defined in instances where those in authority misuse their authority to violate the rights and liberties of individuals or organizations. It can manifest in various forms such as corruption, excessive regulations, unfair practices, or unjustified interference in private affairs. All I have ever requested is help in the form of grants and friendly contractors when it came to my property. Instead, I was given time constraints and drug through the court system, being denied representation at that time. All the while, the assistant DA and code enforcement officers sat at their table and kept laughing. And I don't know at what, but it really made me feel bad. There are structures that are located at thirty-two oh seven, thirty-two oh nine, and thirty-two eleven South Martin Luther King Boulevard. They're part of the rich history and cultural heritage of Longview, Texas. We understand the necessity of progress and development. Still, we believe that these historical structures both inspire a sense of pride in the community and represent an important part of our city's identity. According to the Longview Historic Preservation Committee Commission, protecting such structures benefits the local tourism economy and fosters educational programs on historical significance. A proof in such a point, the, um, today, I happen to feed the, um, Longview, it was the people that come through, and I'm getting stuck now. I'm getting, I was doing well, but I apologize. Prepared desserts for leadership, Longview. They were all enthralled as I talked about the history of that building. It's a hundred-plus years old on the front part of it. Um, I have a vision that I would be glad to discuss with you, especially Ray, Ray, since you are over that area. If you would get with me tomorrow or today, I would appreciate it. Maybe you can help. What you don't see is in my, is that I have an exhibit in a local museum, the war hero that comes around on his scooter.
Your time is up. If you would wrap it up quickly.
I'm done.
Thank you.
G. Floyd.
Good evening. G. Floyd is my name, and I want to talk to you about the implementation or the vote on the animal ordinance amendment to chapter thirteen of the city code. I am in support of it, the adoption of it. And I would just say, we have identified a problem, and now we cannot simply sit on the problem. We have to do something about it. And we need to move to implement the solution that we know that will be successful already. We need to be aware that every community is not fully educated or aware of the problem or the implementation solution that we are proposing. But we need to be sure to give them time to be educated about it. And that's why my recommendation has been from the beginning to enact the ordinance or the amendment, and then give an extended amount of time, maybe one year, eighteen months, or two years for the full implementation of that. And we could simply use the water bill to send out a flyer to let people know as a part of an executive summary to say what it would look like now, or its initial enactment, and at the time that it's fully implemented, what it would look like too. And so what people, we require of individuals. Gray County has already fully endorsed the program. They've already provided funding for some aspect of the spade and the neutering program. And so we know that the county judge and the county commissioners are already in full support of it. And they provided that funding. I ask you to vote for the amendment to give the administration the latitude for implementation of it, so that, again, people can be aware of it and know what it looks like at a particular time. And we know that the implementation will be successful already, because we've already got the history, we got the program, we know how it has worked in others. And, again, we've already identified the problem, and we simply cannot just sit on it. And we need to move as quickly as we can to solve this problem. So, thank you, and again, I am in support of it.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd. Next is Tori Anderson.
Hello. My name is Tori Anderson. I live in Longview, and I am also here, I'm a dog breeder, and I'm the secretary of the Longview Kennel Club. I'm not opposing the ordinance. I actually want to say thank you very much to our mayor, our city council, Ms. Hubbard. You guys heard our concerns, and you guys worked with us to kind of tweak a few things in your ordinance. I took it back to our meeting that we had on Tuesday, and our club was very grateful that you guys had listened to those concerns, kind of the contingencies of different, of the USDA versus the TDLR and what your guys' stuff was. And I just want to say thank you very much for listening, and we, as an animal-loving group, look forward to working with you guys in the future to kind of, you know, help with our animals. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. I do not have any other speaker cards. Are there any other citizens that would like to speak and fill out a card after doing so? Seeing then, I will move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that council would like to pull off for further discussion, or is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. We'll move on to action items. Action item A is consider an ordinance amending chapter thirteen of the Longview City Code. Ms. Hubbard.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I will not go into the full presentation as we did last time. I am back again with the ordinances recommended from the Animal Advisory Committee. Instead of the full presentation, I thought I would go into some of the recommended updates based off of the council, or since the council meeting from last time. Am I doing today? Oh, I'll do today. Okay. So, just, we heard some of the concerns about the microchip language. So, we have proposed that in the definitions, we remove the specific language that the microchip is required to maintain, or be maintained between the shoulder blades. We have also added a definition regarding what is a state-licensed breeder. In regards to vaccinations, there was a recommendation to remove the requirement that the rabies tag may be affixed from the collar, so that recommendation is there. Back to the microchip requirements, some of this will be repeated because it is listed multiple times in the ordinance, but the same thing, removing the language that the microchip is required to be located between the shoulder blades, and allowing language to extend a thirty-day allowance period if they receive a citation. The courts can extend that if there is proof that they have an appointment to be microchipped. In regards to the sterilization requirements, as you remember, there was an exemption if they have a veteran, a letter from their veterinarian. If the veterinarian states that the animal is unable to reproduce permanently, then that letter stands. There is no need for repeated because that condition cannot correct itself. Added an exemption, if you are a state-licensed breeder, you are exempted from this because the lot, the state already licenses you. And then, again, adding that same language with the thirty days, if you have an appointment, you will be able to exceed that thirty days needed for sterilization, if, again, you have an appointment. Regarding to the breeding permit, again, some of it is repeated. We would exempt those who are already licensed by the state because they have already gone through the licensing. We have added language that if you are not currently licensed by the state, you would be able to get a permit either annually, or twice for two years, or for three years at a time. We did hear the concerns about the number of offspring, so we have increased that instead from one to two, and, again, the thirty-day language. We have recommended that the ordinances go into effect February one, so we will have an ample period, if approved, to be able to communicate with our citizens. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hubbard. I do want to say thank you to you and staff for all the work that you've put in. I saw some animal shelter advisory folks here, so thank you for the work that y'all put in. We have a lot of shelter staff here. Thank you, guys. We have a lot of rescues and supporters that spoke last time that are, again, here. Thank you for being here, and just thank you, thank you for your time and effort in all of that. I appreciate it. Are there questions, discussion, comments for Ms. Hubbard?
Yes, I have a question. On page fifty-seven, it says on there in the language, each, each day that the microchip is not done, a separate offense and a day of fine every day, or a separate offense. What do y'all mean by that?
Um, I do not have the full document in front of me, so I don't know what's on page fifty-seven. I'm so sorry.
So, that is language that is found in many of our ordinances, and so what that basically means is a person could be written a separate citation for each day that they did not have that. As a matter of practice, we don't do that with our ordinances, but it's there mostly because occasionally you have people who, who we really have difficulty getting to comply with the ordinance, and so after a period of time, it gives you a little bit more enforcement ability.
But that is where the thirty-day allowance could come in. If they do have an appointment to get microchipped or sterilized, that would be waived because there is an appointment scheduled.
But on that, on that line in particular, there's no amount, no what it'll be, it's just up to the discretion of?
Fines are set by the judge. Once a citation is issued in any capacity, they go to municipal court judge, and that is up to the judge's discretion.
Okay. Also, I have a question about the requirements of pictures for intact permits.
Okay.
The pictures in the home. What, what type of pictures are you asking?
For enclosures, how, of course, the goal is to reduce the ability to reproduce. So, if there's a kennel they will be in, if there's a fenced yard, if there is an outdoor cage, some pictures of that sort, not of the home, per se, but how will they be enclosed to prevent reproduction?
But then in the language, it just says as necessary, as they deem necessary. I'm assuming like the manager, this seems necessary of what type of pictures they want. They can request more pictures if need be.
If, if the pictures provided are unclear, there may be follow-up pictures requested.
Okay. That's it for now.
Thank you. Anybody else? Questions, comments, discussion?
The only thing that I would add is that I just want to make sure that when we're trying to put this ordinance into place, we want to make sure that we actually have the staff, because Bonnie, you've stated that y'all are understaffed as of now.
Miss Campbell.
So, when we put this ordinance, that puts more stress on the staff, correct?
Correct.
So, if all the staff is not in place when this ordinance goes into place, then we already go ahead and start doing all these fees, because you have registration fees, you have fines and all of these. My suggestion is, why don't we put a pause on all the fees until we know that the shelter is fully functioning and that city council can evaluate and see where y'all are at?
That will be a recommendation from council.
I think, go ahead, Ms. Ford.
I just have a question. How many citations did we write in the calendar year? Maybe yourself or Mr. Knox knows.
I believe it's been a few months since I looked. I can follow with accurate data. There were about nine hundred citations written last year for animals at large, just animals at large.
Okay. And you don't know maybe how many of those were microchipped, that, no? Okay. But about roughly nine hundred altogether from the department?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry?
That's three a day.
Are you done? Are you good?
Yes, ma'am.
You're good? Okay. Mr. Conley?
Yes. Yeah, I would just, I think we're, I appreciate, like we mentioned earlier, that we listen to our constituents. We know that this is an issue. We're trying to figure out a way to address it, but I do also agree with Ms. Moore, making sure as we move forward as a council that we've got, you know, our audience, our ordinance is only as strong as, I think Mr. Ray's insinuating too, that we have the ability to enforce, and being able to make sure that Ms. Hubbard's team has the amount of personnel that they need, and especially with our opportunity to maybe look at hiring and adding positions to the, for the animal control officers.
Sure.
I think that's one of the things that we, we've discussed that, but that may be, if we want this to be something that's, that's, has the impact that it's had to other cities, I think we need to make sure we have the personnel to make it, be able to enforce it the proper way.
Yeah, I would, go ahead.
No, I mean, I think we're anticipating that, correct?
We will be trying for next budget year, yes.
Well, and I'd like, so I'll go ahead and add.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Moore and I have talked about this offline. Longview Pause is the five oh one C three that supports the shelter. They have graciously agreed that if the ordinance is adopted tonight, that they will fund a fourth animal control officer for the city of Longview. It's about a thirty-five thousand dollar cost to begin effective on that February first date. So, absolutely agree, more staff is needed, and then that would roll into the budget year for the city for future years. But I, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you to Longview Pause, and I think this whole process has really been a way to solve problems, as we mentioned earlier, and I appreciate the council and all those that have participated in that and the work that's put in to make that happen.
Absolutely.
I just want to add, so it's, an ordinance is a guiding document. So, we pass the ordinance, and that's what tells them what they need to go out and do. It's, you don't pause a law for lack of staff, because you make division and get extra staff based on the ordinance that we pass. So, give you a hypothetical, this pa, we pass it, we're fully staffed. Next month, we're not. Do we pause and wait on fully staffed again to start enforcing the law? No. So, you move forward with what you have, you make that initiation, then we do things to work together to fulfill those positions to help our animal control officers to be able to do their duty and their job. Also in this, it's, at this point, it's kind of like trying to stop a leak. And dogs breed, cats breed, cats breed extremely fast. So, any delay in the enforcement of this just further compounds the issue and the stress and the workload on the ACO officers. So, it's not one or the other, and they're not a false dichotomy. It's not a choice between this or that. It's, it's, do we do this, and then we do this? We do both to try to help alleviate the situation. That's all I have.
Good. Mr. Pirtle, I saw your hand.
Have we had any luck on a vet yet?
Yes, sir. We do have one. She is scheduled to start in January. She is currently working with another facility and put in an advance notice to them because of their scheduling.
And we're one, we're one officer out right now being fully staffed?
Uh, we do have three field animal control officers. We have one who is newly hired, so she is in training. So, we do not have three fully utilized on the streets at the moment.
But the judge makes the final decision on the, on the fees, right?
On the, once a citation has been issued, he makes the final decision on those fees. Yes, sir.
You good?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to add, I just want to make sure that we understand, it's not about putting this in place. We all want something in place, but we have to make sure that we're doing the right thing on both sides. We can't go in knowing that we are understaffed and then put this enforcement in, and then put further strain on our employees. So, if there's strain on our employees, and then we're already ready to find our, find the citizens, how's that fair? So, that's why it has to go together. We need to be fully staffed. We need to know that we can handle this ordinance before we put a strain on the citizens, because a lot of these are going to be, the people that are going to come and pay these fees are going to be responsible pet owners. It's not going to be the irresponsible pet owners that are going to kind of rush up here and pay these fees. It's going to be the citizens on low income. We still, we don't even think about the homeless people, what, what's going to happen to them and their dogs. So, there's a lot of things in play. So, I do want to make sure that we're fully staffed before this ordinance is in place and before any fines and fees are put upon the citizens.
Any other comments, discussion? Otherwise, I guess I need a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those that are opposed? One. Motion is approved. I will move on next to B. Consider a resolution setting fees related to intact pet permits and breeding permits. Ms. Hubbard, you're still up.
Yes, I'm still here. The two fees that are in correlation to the ordinances that are pre-citation are in regards to the intact pet permit. It has been recommended at fifty dollars per animal. And the second are for the breeders, and those, again, who are not already licensed by the state would have the breeding permit fees. Thank you. And they, we are recommending that we currently follow state law on those, which is ten or few, ten or fewer females at one fifty total. And then, again, we would follow the state law, and that is a tiered program.
Any questions, comments, discussion for Ms. Hubbard on this one?
Just the same, the same comment. It's just that on this fee resolution, I want to know when the fee resolution is going to be reevaluated, because, like I said before, we need to know that we're fully staffed, and those fees and fines should not go into place until we're fully staffed.
Yeah. I, I will respond. I do believe we need to start it effective February first when we start the ordinance, or the ordinance has no teeth. But I definitely would commit to evaluating that at six months. We, of course, do it every twelve months when we approve the budget, when we approve all the fees. And I think we could work with Bonnie and staff to think about making sure that we track the right things. I know some of your concerns are senior or elderly or disabled or homeless individuals that would have a hardship. I think that's something we can explore and evaluate and do better at, once we know who the people are that are registering animals. I have no problem with providing waivers or, you know, something, that we can figure that out. I understand your concern, and I think that's something we can work together, probably, if we figure out the right things to track there.
Yes.
But I'm open to reviewing that whenever you want to. But I do think it's important we put it into place when the ordinance starts. Did, I saw a hand. Mr. Pirtle?
I think we ought to, I think we ought to look at dropping that fee a little bit. I really think that's a little excessive for elderly folks, I'm myself, because, you know, we're looking at a situation where we have to do something. Every district has got a problem, and we have to do something. But people that want to try to do right are going to skirt from trying to do right because they can't afford it. So, if we help them a little bit, and, and, and don't, don't start off at fifty dollars, they start off at twenty-five or, you know, I, something like that, that would help. And maybe, you said it's not going to start until February. You know, I'm kind of, I'm kind of with Shannon on this. We need to be fully staffed before we start popping in there and, you know, doing all that. We're going to load the judge up, is what we're going to probably do here. If we have nine hundred, you know, tickets a year on this, I mean, he's going to spend all his time working on animal control tickets, I guess, you know, at that point, because there's going to be a lot of them. So, I think we ought to, ought to reduce the fee a little bit, and then look at it, like you say, three or four months or six months down the line, and we may be pleasantly surprised. There may be a lot of people that are, that are taking care of this and doing it. These are just for animals that are caught, right? I mean, there's nothing that's going to stop an animal control officer from seeing somebody with their dog on the front porch and walking up and saying, has you got that dog chipped? Have you got that dog spayed or neutered? Or, you know, that, that's, that's unrealistic to happen. And I think the ordinance is, is more than anything else, it's just for the real grievous offenders, you know?
Sure.
And the ones that we can't control. I don't, I don't want some little man or little lady to lose their animal because they can't afford it. And I'm sure Judge Jackson is not going to let that happen. So, I think we ought to reduce the fees to start with.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Campbell.
Could we do like a sliding scale for, like, people below the Global Poverty Index? Like, I mean, that's trackable, and so it would stay at the fifty for those who can afford it, and in order to, because I agree with everybody, I don't want anyone elderly or that can't afford to have these, to be fearful of following, you know, the ordinance because of fear of losing their animals.
Sure.
But otherwise, I'm very grateful for all the feedback of our citizens and all the groups that have spent countless hours with us doing the work to get this done.
Sure. I saw, Mr. Pirtle, hand.
I think if we, or let animal control, or those folks pick and choose which scale we use, I think that's wrong. That's putting them in a situation. I think we need to let the judge do that. That's what we've got him for, and I think he, he, it doesn't put staff in a situation to have to make a decision on, out there in the field on somebody, pick up their dog and go in, you know? I think we ought to let Judge Jackson make that decision. And to pick a scale, a sliding scale of who can afford it and can't afford it, that's not really a fair thing to all the citizens of Longview, because that way we're picking and choosing.
But it's answering what you stated, and they said that Judge Jackson would be, that he would be dictating the fees after the animal was caught, but it's up to the council to establish the base fees.
Yeah.
And so that's what I'm speaking. And so, that's what I'm speaking in regards to.
Yeah, I don't personally have any problem with 25. We've talked about that before. If you wanted to do that, that would be a motion to approve the fee with a change for that.
And it's kind of like the homeless people. A lot of them have, have their dogs with them, that's their family. They can't afford that. So, that's, that needs to be on the situation where Judge Jackson can look at that on a case-by-case deal. And that's, that's, that's an instance where we can't take money from somebody.
So, are you making a motion to reduce the fees to $25 instead of 50?
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve the, the resolution setting fees changing from 50 to 25 for the intact pet permit. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution is approved. We will move on to Action Item C. Consider a resolution to rename Nicky Court as Julie Rachel's Drive. Ms. Gamboa, this one's yours.
Yes, so before I make my comments, I think Hardisans forgot to fill out a speaker card. I don't know if they still wanted to possibly say a few words, is that allowed during this time?
Sure.
Okay, Ms. Eevee, I will call you up to the stand and before I make my remarks, I will let you make your remarks.
Thank you guys so much for having us tonight, we're so excited about.
We're talking to the microphone because we can't really hear you, thank you.
Thank you guys so much, I really don't need a microphone, but thank you so much for having us tonight. We're so excited at the possibility of this getting changed for this amazing woman that has changed so many lives here in East Texas. Look, there she is. And guys, we have kept this a secret till about right now. Someone is going to tell her, even though we've got her busy speaking. So, we just want to, I want to start with a letter with someone who has known her. We have quite a bit, board members and community and volunteer and staff here. Hardisans is committed to three different community events, so I have letters here as well. But I wanted to read one in particular. It says, "I write you today regarding the proposed name street change, Nicky Court, located in District 5. I would like to express my support in the street name being changed to Julie Rachel's Drive in honor of the contributions in this community. I've been a part of this organization since 2014 as a volunteer, as a board member, as president of the board, and as staff as the program director here at Hardisans. I've watched Julie pour out her heart, her soul, her energy, her monetary resources, and the love into the ministry that is Hardisans. She grew this program from an idea to a reality, and she has nurtured it and loved it and grown it 10 years without receiving any compensation for her time or her efforts. She has always been the very first one in and the very last one out, ensuring that all volunteers are well-trained, all staff are well-trained personally and professionally. She doesn't just make sure that we know how to do our jobs from 8 to 5 Monday through Friday, she has poured into us personally 24 hours a day. She has also been, excuse me, I lost my thought. She makes sure that handmade goods are made and sold to the very best quality for everyone that buys them. She has made sure that the Work Readiness Program has ran smoothly, properly, and has grown over the last 10 years to make sure that women are independent, self-sufficient, and can take care of their families, and are great employees and community partners here in Gray County. She has also, the purchase and the re, the restructure of the 10 properties within the cul-de-sac has been over a decade of research, planning, and preparation. Hardisans Village, all of the 10 duplexes located on Nicky Court and the Hardisans Work Readiness Program, Hardisans Marketplace, and the Village Greens, all located in the adjacent property of 3501 Gilmer Road, are equally parts of her vision to help women become self-sufficient and provide affordable, safe, transitional housing for women who are restarting their lives. The village created on Nicky Court and these connected ministries will long last, be a long-lasting visual in our community, and they are going to continue to power, empower women, strengthen families, and brighten futures for people that live in Longview, Texas. As we now establish our first executive director to stand in the helm of her place, I think there is no better way to honor Julie Rachel's legacy in our community than naming the street as a contribution to her. Thank you for your consideration, Kendra Tennyson." I agree, I cannot think of a better way to honor a woman who has so selfishly, selfishly, selfishly been such a servant here in Longview, Texas and the surrounding areas. She has changed so many women's lives, she has changed so many children's lives. And I just would hope that you would consider renaming the street in her honor. Thank you.
And before I begin my remarks, if you're here in support of this change, would you please stand up? Thank y'all for being here. So, today I'd like to propose something special, renaming Nicky Court to Julie Rachel's Drive. If you know Julie, you know why this makes perfect sense. Back in 2012, Julie took what started as a simple church arts and crafts interest and turned it into something extraordinary. She saw women in our community struggling to break free from poverty and said, "We can do better." And she did just that. Since that time, Hardisans Marketplace has helped more than 100 women not just find jobs, but build careers. We're talking about moms now working in healthcare, construction, our school system, and various careers that can support families. Over 90% of Hardisans graduates are now in our workforce, contributing to our community and showing their kids what's possible. What's beautiful about renaming this particular street in District 5 is that it's now home to Hardisans Village. 10 duplexes where program graduates can live while building their new lives. This street represents exactly what Julie has always been about, giving women not just help, but hope and a real path forward. I can't think of a better time to recognize how one person's dedication has changed so many lives in Longview. I ask my fellow council members to support renaming this street Julie Rachel's Drive. It's a fitting tribute to someone who's shown us all what it means to serve our community. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, we are very grateful to Hardisans and to Ms. Julie for all that you do for our community. So, thank you, keep up the good work.
And it was a secret news, people. So, if you can wait till they break it to her first, before y'all break it, appreciate it, thank you.
All right, we're moving on to Action Item D. Ms. Gamboa, you are leaving for that one? Consider a resolution accepting the Longview Exhibit Center re-roof, Mr. Dwayne Archer, Director of Public Works.
Yes, Mayor and Council, that project is complete. So, I bring to you to consider a resolution to accept that project and authorize final payment of $21,263.09 for that project.
Any questions of Mr. Archer or discussion?
I'll make a motion, approve.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution is approved. If you'll bring Ms. Gamboa back, thank you. We'll move on to discussion item. Do any animal or Hardison folks want to leave? We'll take a brief pause if you would like to leave. You're welcome to stay, we'd love for you to stay. Nope, just kidding, sorry. Discussion item, discussion, such a hard day. Discussion regarding the potential future programming of the LISD, an auditorium, and other pool-related issues. That's Mr. Conley, Ms. Moore, and Mr. Pirtle.
So, basically, oh, go ahead, Principal.
I want to know where we're at. I, I do need to apologize to the Parks Director a little bit because I jumped the gun on something that we have not discussed yet. And I apologize to John already once. But, we're kind of in the dark on this. We want to know where we're at, what the design looks like now, how much money we're talking about now. And I don't see him here, is he here?
He had a death.
He had a death.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry.
So, Mr. Powell is here, but I think we have a couple of slides ready. This is the concept that we developed based upon the last time that we brought this to City Council with the four different options. There was, we eliminated the lane swimming and focused more on recreational as council had decided and commented, some at the meeting and some after the meeting. There's a zero-depth entry, children's play structure, water slide, the pool depth has a beach entry, and there are sunshades. And so, this is focused entirely on recreational activities, the kind of place you'd want to bring a family. And Seth, if I missed anything on that, let me know.
So, we're looking at $6 million for this project?
That's the current estimate based on this concept.
Okay, when is it? What do you want, Shannon? You and, what do you and Ray want? This is y'all's area, that's the way I look at it. Your input is more important than, than some of the others up here, I think.
Oh, no, I've already stated that I'm satisfied with where we're at on this, and we're going to focus on recreation, so I don't have any issues with it.
What do you think, Mr. Ray?
Uh, Mr. Pirtle, I am fine with it as well. You know, if the focus is recreation, I think that's the main thing with it. You know, I'm interested to hear our updates on the LISD, an auditorium, and where we fit in that process, but I'm comfortable with it, you know? We've come a long way with this project, and I'm happy for the progress.
I, I don't know anything about the Longview ISD thing.
Yeah, I think we're about to hear some of it.
Okay.
And so, what's the next step on the concept?
On the Stamper Park? I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that we've moved forward with engineering design and, what you say?
Yes, I would like, I, I, for, for us and for, for Seth and John and, and Public Works that are working on the project, a general consensus that we're all comfortable with this layout will get us to be moving forward with the design plans so that we can detail the estimates and do quality assurance and quality control and make sure we're getting the best bang for our buck. And so, really, we have the contract ready to go. As soon as we get acknowledgement that we're all kind of generally good with that direction and the estimated cost, we have the, we're ready to move forward with the design and get it as close to bringing it to construction as possible with some step points, usually a 30, 60, and 90% design is how they do that submittal before going to bid, so.
So, are you comfortable with that $6 million?
Yes, sir, and we're going to do our best to, as you and I have discussed, we're going to do our best to make sure where there are things we can do more effectively or better for cheaper money, we're going to pursue those. I assure you, I want this to impact, I would love for the pool cost to be $4 million, but I don't think at this point, based on the available information and the expertise that we have, that that's possible. But it will certainly be our drive to drive down this and get the most pool that we can get for the least amount of money.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the original, that some of the council members approved here, I was not including that, was 3.5. Wouldn't it require a separate vote for the increase of $2.5 million in this pool before you even proceed with any type of?
If there's a general consensus that this is the design, because if you remember the, the original design that showed not much pool for 3.5 million. And so, what I would propose to do is, obviously, you've already allocated the 3.5 million, that included the design fees necessary to move forward. We'll move forward with the design fees, and if the bids come back too high and council doesn't want to award the construction contract, it doesn't want to use the additional fund balance, then that's something that, it's at that time of the construction award that we would actually need the additional money if it does indeed come back higher.
Than 3.5?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, if I had, I mainly, my question is about the LISD and auditorium, they're presenting that first, and then I would ask my questions, or can I ask my question?
There's no real presentation.
Oh, yeah, because we have the presentation that they opened up to us in their chambers. I know when we had that meeting, we agreed that no more than 50% would be, we would be paying for operation costs. It would just be depending on what we used. I just wanted to see where we were at on those numbers. And then, in regards to senior programming and the kids' programming, I wanted to make sure that that's what our focus was in regards to that, along with accessibility.
I think both of, I, I believe both of those things were sent in with our desired usage for that, for senior programming, exercise, as well as getting, learning to swim, certainly. And I think that that 50% was only thrown out because Longview ISD said they had to use it 51% of the time, so that's where we started, and that at this point, they will be looking, Longview ISD will be looking to get their own swimming or pool, or you correct me if I'm saying something wrong, architect that will make those designs, and then he's, Dr. Guidry said they would be looking for other partners. So, we would be one, hopefully, of many partners that would be using that facility.
Hopefully, would be way less than 30.
Right, I have no way to know, yeah. Until we're much further along.
In a perfect world, that would be the hope.
Sure, okay.
The, the initial meeting was basically an open forum that most of you were in attendance on that just basically said, and I'm paraphrasing Mr. Tubb, what he basically said. He said, "We just want to know, what would you use it for? What, what are your needs that you don't have? What things are you not able to have? We just want to know how you would use that. And then, what, what does the operation agreement look like that? We would, we have to know exactly what your needs or what your desires are for that facility, where, how you would use that, or how open to the community it would use that." And so, I believe the general consensus was, the response was, the recreation needs are being taken care of in the Stamper Pool and the Ingram Pool that are in there. But then there was a discussion about, well, how could we use that? And, and again, I will, I will let Seth correct me if I'm wrong on this, but Seth said, Seth and John got together and Director Albertson basically put together a list of all the learn-to-swim programming, the exercise, the water aerobics, things like this, how we would use it in an auditorium, because that's obviously set up for a different type of swimming event than recreational. And so, they asked for that list of ideas or concepts, how we would use and program that facility, and they asked us to submit that to them. And so, we, we did not submit that to them pending this discussion item. We held that back, we have it prepared, but it's largely that type of discussion. It's, these are how the programming things we would use for that facility. They were going to take back with their architects, is my understanding, to go back and say, "Could we accommodate those within the 40-plus million-dollar budget they have for those? And if so, if we had to build additional facilities, what portion of that or what operation, what programming, what staffing, what share in operational? That's the next question, if they can actually accommodate the essential programming needs that we're mentioning we have a deficit for."
So, if we're using taxpayer money to help pay for these operations, will it be open to every, every district? And then, will our citizens that are Longview residents have to pay for the use of this pool?
Respectfully, I would have to tell you that until we know whether or not they can accommodate those needs, that is part of what they're requesting initially, but they don't even know if they can accommodate our needs at this point. So, that was, it was really just a brainstorming, and you, I, I don't, that's what the feeling I got from it initially.
Sure, certainly open to everybody, though the operating agreement that the city would have with them would allow any Longview resident to use it. I don't know about a fee, probably we charge fees for the pools that we run ourselves, so probably, but I guess we don't know. I saw Mr. Conley had a hand.
Yes, ma'am. First, I'm very excited about Stamper Park. I like that we've had discussion about that. I think it's, if we're going to do something in Longview, let's make it Longview quality, let's make it nice. And I think we had discussions, I love the, I hope it can do a lot to help the entire city of Longview, particularly that section of Longview. And I love the fact that we've done this to help our families and our kids have a great, a place that they can be proud of.
Yeah.
The second part on Longview ISD, I wasn't a part of the discussion for the things that are being discussed now with operational fees, and I'm, I'm, I guess I want to be, I'm asking really to be clear here, we have not made a decision and we're not voting to make, to use any Longview, city of Longview taxpayer money to go to this operation fees. Am I understanding this in the right way?
Not right this second, but, but in future budget years? I mean, that is essentially what they were asking us.
Because I want to go back to the reason, we've had so many discussions about pools in this short amount of time that we've been city council members. And one of the biggest thing I do remember is the reason, and as somebody that's a Pantry ISD employee, that we did not want to be connected, or we didn't do a good job as a city of maintaining the pool that we had. And so, we moved away from that because of the control within the school district that we lost as a city because we didn't have control of it on that lane. school district that we lost as a city because we didn't have control of it on that land. And I'm hoping that we're not, and I know the taxpayers of Longview School District voted on their auditorium, I hope it wasn't, I, I see the word partnership used, but I hope we can, you know, have a discussion about that, because a commitment to tax, our taxpayer money was totally independent of the, the bond that was passed by them. So I do agree, we did talk about safety and being able to teach young people how to swim, we know that's an issue, we need to find a solution to that, and, you know, we're talking about the recreational ability of Stamper, but I think that's one of the big things that we had in our discussion, but I'm, as, as somebody, I, I just want to make sure we're looking forward here in problems that could exist with the partnership between Longview ISD and the operation fees of our taxpayer money to go towards that, relying on the city. I think that's something that we all wanted to discuss, I think we, we, the best, we, we're, our number one job is to create amenities for our citizens, but also be, not just on the short term, but long term, make sure we're very efficient and have efficacy with our taxpayer money. And I hope we have further discussions about how much money we're going to allocate to the operating expenses for this auditorium at Longview ISD. Thank you.
Sure. I would say at least from, oh, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Pertle.
I, I really can't support this, I'm, I'm sorry. This is $41,900,000 that, that the citizens of Longview ISD voted on.
Mm-hmm.
Now, Halsell, Spring Hill, and Pine Tree, they didn't vote on this, but we're looking at seven people up here to make the decision for them to spend their city money on this school, on this pool, this M&amp;O for this pool. Now, when they voted on this, they didn't even know where they were going to put this pool at. And nobody's given us an idea of how much this M&amp;O is going to be. It could be $10,000 a year, it could be $100,000 a year, we don't know. We don't even know what the design of the pool is going to be yet. So for us to consider something that half of my constituents I know didn't, didn't have a say in, I can't support that just yet. And, you know, that's just, that's just not right for us to do what we did to some of the other pools around here, and then, like Derek said, go into partnership with Longview ISD when we hadn't even discussed it yet, and it's been in the paper again. And here we go again, Kristen. You know, this is something that we should have talked about before it got proposed, or we were going to discuss it, or talk about it, or look into it. We should have already had this discussed before we decided to entertain the Longview ISD on this. I just don't think it's right for the citizens of the rest of the city, even Longview ISD citizens are going to get hit twice. One, they're going to get hit for this $41 million, which with taxes and interest and everything is going to be about 72, $72 million for it's over with. So that amount of money, they're going to have to pay back, plus now they're going to have to pay some of their city tax money back, whether it's a dollar, a di, you know, a $100,000 or whatever, they're still going to be taxed twice on that side. And now the other school districts around here are going to get taxed for it. I go back to, well, we dismantled the pool, you know, I, I still, that still eats on me a little bit, because we tore up a million to $2 million worth of structural, not cosmetic and not, not mechanical, but structural, because it basically was on school property. We didn't, some of us did. And we could have used that money to redo that pool, what we're trying to pill, build at Stamford Park now. I agree with Stamford Park, we need something on that side of town, very, very badly. And I'm, I'm wholeheartedly in support of that pool. But this, I, I, the people just didn't have a chance to vote on this that you're asking to pay for it, so I can't support it. I won't support it unless I get a lot, a lot of calls, and I'm sure I will, one way or the other now, to voice my opinion on it. But I just, I just can't support this right now.
Sure, I don't think we've really been asked to support anything necessarily. At the meeting that, you know, those that wanted to attend, attended, they asked if the city would be interested in an operating agreement for use of the pool. The only number that was thrown out was that a pool of the type they were talking about would be about $100,000 annually for just the actual, what's the word I need for that? Not maintenance?
Operations.
Operations, yeah. To keep the pool open, that wouldn't include like staffing and other things, how we'd figure that out would have to be through an agreement. But, but I do think it's an important conversation to have, because at least from my perspective, we are turning a little bit for Stamper Park to be recreation only, and in my mind, I'm counting on a agreement with Longview ISD to handle swim lessons, exercise, other things. We pivoted from a couple of pool designs where it would have to be larger at Stamper Park and cost more money to address those things, so I do think it's timely that we talk about that. The difference to me between the, the pool, the Longview Swim Center that was closed, a lot of the feedback on that was, "We don't own that and we're investing in the construction." This will be, Longview ISD, for better or worse, being the owner and taking the hit if something goes wrong with that. Now, they may ask for us in an operating agreement to include, you know, capital investment or other things, but we're definitely not at that point. At this point, they were just asking, "Would we consider an operating agreement with them for use of the pool for all of the residents of Longview?" So.
Well, the city pool, we charge for them to learn to swim there, we charge to, to give lessons, we charge for people to go swimming, and I'm sure they're going to charge the same thing.
I think that would be, I mean, that would be part of our operating agreement, but I think we would capture those same, in the same way.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but, you know, it's just, you know, the citizens of Longview that belong to Longview ISD are going to get hit twice. One, like I say, they're going to be paying back for the bond, and now they're going to be paying out of their city taxes for the, the use of that pool. And then three of the other school districts had no, their citizens had no say in it, other than us now, and I just can't agree with that at this point. I, I just, you know, this should have been brought to us before it got hit in the paper and before the superintendent and all this, you know, talked about it and everything. You know, we, we're the ones that are supposed to allocate the money for the citizens of Longview, and now we're not. You know, we're kind of getting told what we, what we need to be looking at. And I don't entertain us spending any money with Longview ISD because we're not spending any at Halsell, we're not spending any at Spring Hill, we're not spending any at Pine Tree. That was part of the reason of tearing the pool down, like you said, is it's not on our property. This is not on our property, but we're still investing money.
Well, but we're not giving it to Longview ISD to support them, we're ensuring that the Longview residents have the place that they need to go to get those amenities. And I personally think it's probably going to be the cheapest option available to us as opposed to building an additional pool somewhere that we would have to come out of pocket for that money plus operating. I mean, we're going to have that at Stamper, we're going to need to build into the annual budget that operating. So I honestly think it'll be the cheapest option we have, but I'm sorry, I'm sorry if it evolved in a way that you felt like I said something out of turn, I did not intend to. It's an interesting concept to try and figure out with another entity that has boards, and they need our kind of opinion on it, and that's, I didn't intend to get out ahead of anything, so I apologize if I offended you. Ms. Campbell, has had her hand up for a minute? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd just like to clarify that I'm not necessarily neither for or against this. You guys listed this as a discussion item, so I'm discussing this item. And then also, they did open up a forum for us to all meet there. I believe Mr. Conley, you were the only ones not present during that discussion where we did talk about this. And second of all, the other issue with the Pine Tree Pool was also access. Everyone's forgetting the access portion of why this pool was shut down. And in regards to you saying that we do allocate funds, you guys are considering allocating $6 million from savings, which isn't even money we have in our general operating budget to build a pool, construct it, and then build that financing into the next couple council years. So you're almost contradicting yourself in this statement, because like I stated when y'all voted on this, I believe that this should have gone for voter approval as well. Something this massive, millions of dollars, you sev, like, like you said, you seven are making these choices, you quite literally made the choice to take that money out of our savings and put it in a pool, that's just the building cost. So I'd just like to make those statements clear, as y'all are trying to, you know, put words into what some of us did. To defend myself, I was trying to be fiscally responsible, and I also believe in personal responsibility. I wasn't part of the councils when it was brought to you guys that, that pool needed maintenance. By the time it needed maintenance, it was extremely expensive, and so I just think that rather than pointing fingers in order to make your point in regards to you spending $6 million from savings, let's stick to the facts. So, because that's what you guys are doing too, you are literally making decisions of how you're allocating the taxpayer savings. Thank you.
That's on Mr. Nushtetian.
So I just want to like give direction on Stamper Pool too, like, as I feel like it was kind of the cart before the horse, I do want to understand, like, this is, again, going to be a recreational pool, with Ingram Pool reaching the likely end of its life too as well, this will be the only, possibly the city-owned pool, depending on what the council decides at that time when we have to do it. So I do support going with the proposed plan, I think it'll be a beautiful pool and give access to all the citizens to be able to do recreational activity there. As far as the LISD auditorium, these were preliminary discussions, they're in the planning phase, they need to know kind of what the direction the city is. I would want to thank Mr. Tubb and Superintendent, not Shepherd, but Guidry and Shepherd, as for being hospitable to us, accepting, looking, looking for input, and they want to be community partners with the City of Longview to access for all the citizens on that. And they kind of hit some of this stuff on there. They have a, an idea of where the location is going to be, I don't want to put them in any sort of corner, but there will be access year-round, which was not the case with Pine Tree ISD with closed campus, so we'll have that access. It is going to be owned, it's going to be owned and maintained by LISD. It's not a situation where we own the pool, where they own, it's on their property and then we maintain it. So they're, they're different situations. So we gave the input that what the citizens of Longview is wanting, from the comprehensive plan, the citizen says they want pools. And that is a way for us to not, this is actually the most fiscal responsible way to save the taxpayer money compared to building a pool and having to maintain a full servicing of that for only a limited window of time, because the, the pool that we would be able to build would not have the ability of the sports activities, the diving wells, the lane pools, the lap pools, the inside, having access, the 24/7, or 24/7, 365, you wouldn't be able to do something like that with an outdoor-related pool. So it's going to be a far better pool that the city could ever provide without going up to a bond, which would cost, again, their spending $47 million, so the city, for the citizens of Longview to get access to such a facility, I think is something that we should heavily consider. And then, yeah, and we're just talking about at this point, there's, it's so early in the stage, I think it's going to take them a few years to build it out. And so I appreciate LISD for putting the city's input and listening to what our needs are to help in that, so that's it. Thank you.
It's not 24/7?
Well, I'm just, I'm saying it can be.
It can be?
That's what they said, it could be.
Accessible 24 hours a day.
That's what they said they were considering, and it's enclosed and heated, what they want for, it's just what they stated at that two and a half hour long meeting, or how long it was.
And it's whether or not they do that or not, the, the access is there.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not, it's not going to be on the, on the closed campus part, anybody can access it during the times that are allotted for that. And again, they, they said, they really could open it for 365 days because it's indoor and heated pool.
Yeah.
Again, we, as City of Longview, unless we go for bond and we spend $46 million, we're not going to get an equivalent facility.
Any other discussion or comments? Go ahead, Mr. Conley.
Yeah, I just want to go back and when we had our lengthy discussions about a pool, we mentioned, and Mr. Albertson's not here, but we talked about the lack of personnel and the, we heard that there were, you know, we couldn't find people to be lifeguards. And so my concern also is if we're adding or expecting with the operating expenses to help do that, I don't want to take away from what we have in Stamper Park and make sure we have the, the things that we're talking about and we're excited about, we're making that really a, a very nice facility for our families.
Absolutely. I agree. Anything anybody wants to add? Okay, I'm going to move on to the presentation item. Presentation and discussion regarding the City of Longview's pavement management policy. Mr. Archer, you're back again.
All right, thank you, Mayor, Council. Today I'm going to bring a discussion about pavement management here in Longview. So why do we have a pavement management program? It's about safety for our pedestrians and the traveling public, efficient use of our available funding, extending the lifespan of existing pavement, and identifying future capital projects in relations to roads. So today I'll talk about our system, explain what our system looks like, our pavement management process, including funding, and then pavement quality index, what exactly that means, we've all heard that term, and then our maintenance. The City of Longview maintains 1,007 lane miles of roadways, that's equivalent to traveling from Longview, Texas to Greenville, North Carolina, so it's quite a bit of roadway. Now, to show you some of our networks, so this is the arterials, these are the main thoroughfares in this, in the network, this is Fourth Street, Bill Owens, Birdsong, those type of streets. We have 139 lane miles, and the council policy is 7, 70 when we talk about the PQI index. Our collectors, these are roadways like Sixth Street, Blue Ridge, Green Street, Hollybrook, those kind, that's 120 lane miles that we have, and that's, that minimum index is 65 for these. The local streets, of course, that makes up most of it, 748 lane miles, and we have a street rating minimum of 60. So what do we do? I'll talk a little bit about the, the process that we use for pavement management. One-third of the streets are tested every year, so in a three-year period, we cover the entire city as far as the testing. That helps us determine our needs, we take all that data, put it into our pavement management software, that then gives us information so that we can make a decision, and then those decisions on maintenance are based on funding available. We use a company named Stantec, they have a vehicle that has a lot of testing, they can actually even bore into the asphalt using this machine, but it tests riding comfort, surface distress, structural adequacy are all tested. If you look at those top pictures, that kind of shows riding comfort, it's really just the smoothness of the road, some roads are smoother than others, the surface distress is really cracking and the aging of the road. And when we talk about structural adequacy, we're really talking about the subbase and the subgrade, where that starts to deteriorate, like I talked about before, that's where a pothole gets formed, is below the asphalt, before the asphalt ever falls. And this, this testing, we don't do this testing on all roadways, it's mainly on arterials and in some cases collectors, we do this kind of testing. I'll talk a little bit about our input and output as far as the decision-making process. So we collect the pavement condition data, performance model, analysis of segments of roadways, and then the budget information. And then that helps us, using the pavement policy, the pavement policy the council has adopted, to say what level of service that we need to do, what maintenance is that. And we get three things out of it, we get the lifecycle cost analysis and the optimization, we get the multi-year network level program, and then the annual project level program. Annual maintenance work is based on the data and available funding, so that, once that data is plugged in and we talk about funding, the way we allocate that, that funding is through maintenance on the different types of roadways. So our local streets will get a chip seal, collector streets, normally it's almost always an overlay, in some cases we may do a chip seal, and then arterials will always do an overlay. So now we'll talk about pavement quality index just a little bit, so you can imagine a level one is a newly built road, that is as, as good and as smooth as it's going to get, and on the other side of the scale you would see a, a number of 45, that is poor, that is a roadway that would require rebuild. The subbase is just not there to, to do any further maintenance. So here's an example of a 90 to 100 PQI on a roadway. Here's an example of 70 to 90. And just to show for comparison, this would be an example of a roadway that is below 45 So like I said, there's two main methods that we use for maintenance, the first is the chip seal, this is where an asphalt, liquid asphalt is applied to the roadway, and then an aggregate or chipped rock would be placed on the road, and then of course rolled in, that extends the life of the road quite a bit. And then an overlay, that's where a part of the roadway is milled, and then we come back with like a two-inch layer of asphalt, and then that's rolled in. And both of those, both of those type of maintenance require that we go out there beforehand and do work, we've got to, we've got to fill, make sure that the cracks are sealed, and we've got to go ahead and fill any potholes and make sure that structure's good before they do any of those maintenance items. Our maintenance capabilities in the street department has increased dramatically over the last few Our maintenance capabilities in the street department has increased dramatically over the last few years. You can see, I took a couple of pictures of some of the equipment that we use, but we do all of that. Back in the day, we had to contract that out. So, when that chip seal contractor, that overlay contractor came to town, we would say, hey, you're going to have to handle the ceiling and the pothole repairs before you do your work. We're doing that in-house now because our crews are able to do it. And with these new capabilities, when we get into the season, which is the summer months mainly, they can do 60 to 100 tons of asphalt a day, which is significant. And so, that covers, that's the process that we use as far as pavement management. And be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, just like process-wise, if you determine a road is at that 45 or lower, what happens to it? Like in our own, just, you know?
We would work to schedule our crews to go out and do a dig-out and patch. So, they would have to dig that down, repair the base completely, and then patch it.
How, is that funded through our normal process, or is that a special, like gets on the list somewhere?
There's not, you know, we have to use maintenance funds that we have in our budget to do that. When we start talking about significant number of roadways or significant lane miles that need to be done, then we would have to come to council for some funding.
If you'll remember, the 2011 street bond election contained about $52 million. I'm going off memory, so y'all give me some grace. But about $52 million worth of funding. It reconstructed several major roadways, and then there were a number of streets that had been oil dirt that we had, to bring all of the old dirt roads up to asphalt roadways, if I remember, was, I want to say, $60 million by itself. And they said, oh, we're not going to do that, the committee at the time. And they said, let's just do the ones that are below that 60. And that was actually $5 million where we converted many of the old dirt roads and repaired the base and did that. But it's just a, it's just a never-ending battle with street maintenance because every time you do something, every other street within your network is still aging.
Yeah. Does it get, I mean, so when we did the 18 bond, we pulled a lot of those roads from the CIP list, if I remember correctly, the big, you know? So, do they get put on the CIP list? Or I guess I'm wondering, like, how is that system tracked that you would know how many roads were under 45?
We have a software package that's called Road Matrix, and it has all that data that we've had. We've had that for 20 years now. And so, it has it all in there, and then we can run numbers at any time and say, show me the ones that are below 45. And then, we can get estimates on getting those taken care of.
I'm just curious how we would rate compared to other communities? Like, X amount of our roads are this, and this, and this?
Yeah. You know, the policies that have been established, our averages are about at those policies for every one of them.
Our policies that we created?
Yes.
I'd be curious how that compares.
So, like our arterials that are, we say we need to be at a 70, the average currently is 70.
She's really wanting to know, compared to other cities?
Yeah.
What are their standards?
Yeah. I don't have that data. I can get that, though.
I'd be interested to know, just because, you know, the roads are a hot topic. People want to know, people are, you know, unhappy always with the condition of the roads. We could always put more money into roads. I get it. I just would be curious to know where we compare. I'm sorry, I'm not talking. I see hands.
I'd be glad to look into that.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Dwayne, for doing this because it helps. So, you know, I like how y'all do an objective way to do this, so that doesn't feel like there's any sort of favoritism or anything like that. It's purely just done about the roads. And so, I do appreciate that. I know some other cities that don't do that, and it's, they now came to this way. So, I appreciate that. So, the, so, questions are, so on the third of the city's streets that are inspected, how much does it cost to have Stantec do?
It's about $60,000 a year.
What, is a third of the time, a third of the streets equivalent, good enough? Or do we, does that need to be?
Yeah, I think so. I think so. Because once we get that data, I mean, we've got, we've got good data on what that was, and for the next couple of years, that will work for our analysis.
And how do y'all decide what third you do? How's that determined? What third of the street?
They have a set, they have a set list. Do this and do this, you know, these areas, do this area, do this area.
So, if they just, if they just got chip sealed, then that road would be back on the list after three years?
No, we, every year, they run one-third of the street, and then we make the decision of what is going to be chip sealed based on that data. Now, they may have run it last year and found some roadways that really need to be dealt with. And so, we may have them run another third this year. But based on all that data, we would then determine what roads need to be hit.
What I'm saying is, how long is a chip seal usually good? If you do a chip seal of a road, how long is it good for?
It's going to last, what?
Five to seven years, I think.
Yeah, something like that.
The reality is, they get the data, they populate, I understand what you're asking. They populate the database. We look at that, and if we go in and do work, we make adjustments to that rating of the street based on the work that we've performed. So, we update the model once we do the work. And then, in another couple of years, if it was tested two years ago, the next year, they'll confirm that rating through the testing. But it's a constant model. So, there's a testing end of it, and then there's an updating end of it, and there's a testing. So, it's a very fluid model.
Well, what I'm thinking of, if a road has been chip sealed, and let's say it's good for five years, and then the third, it comes back around again where it's on the third year, they're reexpecting it again. It's too early. Would that be better served by shifting that to different streets than the ones that have just been chip sealed?
I don't know that that would be better. We want to verify what the condition is of that road, even though we've just chip sealed it. We need to make sure that that's correct. And so, it doesn't hurt a thing for us to go ahead and run it, really.
And then, I'm sorry, I've got a couple of things. Real quick, I tried to get all this stuff. All right. One thing that I would like to see, and I don't know how we could do this, but, you know, there's a lot of county, there's old county roads that we have in our districts. And, you know, I really want to know when those can be, because what happens in our neighborhood streets a lot of times, and so, they just get completely neglected because they just don't have enough traffic going through there. But it's, it's very good for the community, for the neighborhood, to have these updated streets. Is there a way we can address that, or a plan to try to address all the old county roads?
Like I said, we run all of the streets, so we have the data on those. And if they would, if they got into condition where something needed to be done, that would be something we'd look into. Of course, like we, like Rollin was talking about, we had a lot of old dirt roads. And so, that'll have to be, those will have to be a rebuild at some point, and the cost to do that was significant.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say. Do we have a plan to try to get it addressed that?
No, we do not currently. And for the, for as long as I've been doing this, and I know as long as he's been doing this, Gregg County has always been a significant partner with us. And when the old dirt streets have needed maintenance, we have sent that request, and we do that every year. I think, Dwayne, you sent that three months ago, four months ago. And they always come in and do the work and re-oil the roadways. So, they get reconstructed, they don't get converted. I will tell you that the only way to do that is through bond elections, in my opinion. And that is for significant reinvestments at such time, because otherwise, it's a continuing target. You can, you can fund your needs every year, and then four years down the road, your needs are right back where they were when you funded them initially. And we had a history of doing that, unfortunately, many years ago. We actually did just what you said. You acknowledged that the model has moved us to a objective review. I worked on this many, many, many years ago, which is why I know too much about it. Sorry, Dwayne. The, the local streets were actually in better shape than our main thoroughfares. And the reason was because there wasn't a policy to objectify it, and they tried to do everything by district-oriented boundaries as opposed to where the most significant need was. And this policy is actually what's helped create the roads being poor being fixed.
Awesome. Thank you. And then, my last thing is just a plug for the City Send app. So, I get on the City Send app every day pretty much and report potholes. And I have to say, Dwayne, y'all's team is there usually the same day. And so, anybody sees a pothole, go on there, go to City Send app, it's GPS-located, boom. Take a photo, put it in there. It's amazing. So, appreciate y'all.
Thank you. We want people reporting them. Appreciate it.
I just wanted to, he actually took one of mine, so piggyback off the oil roads, because the majority of District 5 is oil roads. And so, just figuring out how we can get some of those things rectified, as well as, when was the last time? I know that it was council-approved. So, when was the last time the council approved the PDI index? And what was that index for these roads? Or the RE, the road index? I think that was during Dean's time as mayor. Was the last time that was approved, correct?
I think it was 2001.
Three.
So, would that be prudent?
Somewhere in there.
Like, to Mary Shihara's point. My district, I love hearing from y'all, please keep calling me. I love when I hear from y'all. Mainly calls me in regards to our streets, poor roadways, litter, things of that nature. And so, I think maybe it's time to revisit or revote on what the index of our roads looks like. I mean, 2003, that's like 20-something years. And so, I think it's important. I think streets affect us all the same. We all take them, no matter what district you're in, and they impact all our citizens the same. So, I would just like to see what the current approved council rating was on that.
Yeah. The arterials, that council approval was 70 on the arterials. It's 65 on the collectors, and it's 60 on the local streets. And I can tell you, on the average, the local streets right now are at 64. The collectors are at 61, so we're a little bit below, but not much. And arterials are actually at 70. That's our average on the network.
And so, from other successful municipalities similar in size to ours, what are, like, what are their adaptive or developing rural societies as they're becoming urbanized? What are their street ratings in comparison to ours?
Yeah. That's like the mayor had asked. I'll look into that and get some data for you guys.
That'd be great.
Sure will.
Yep. Anybody else before I let Mr. Nistat go to the second town? Yep, go ahead.
At a risk of prolonging this meeting, I do have a question to ask. The 45 PQI, and that's basically stating all of the roads that are at a low quality. And you keep records of that, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you have how many and where of those roads that we have that are at 45 PQI?
Yes, we do. We have all that in our software.
Do you have an idea? And I want to say this in all fairness. I'm willing to bet if this audience was filled of District 2 and 3 citizens, they would say the majority of that 45 PQI are in South Longview. And I'm trying, with all fairness to you and your staff.
Right. Some of the older areas of town will have, will have roads that have deteriorated. That's just a fact.
I would be interested outside of council.
Sure. Yeah, I can make that available as well.
To know where the majority of those 45 PQI roads are.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Cullen.
I want to revisit, like Mary Shihara brought up the 70. And, Mr. Archer, I mean, we don't want Longview to be average. We want the best, right? I mean, so, I love to be, compare what compare. I thank you guys for what you do. I do have, in my younger years, a little experience potholing and flagging, so.
Get you back out there.
That brings you to work.
It's not a very, it's more pleasant job right now than it is in summer, that's for sure. But thank you guys for what you do. And just a question, I had, 1,000 miles, that's impressive. How did you pick North Carolina, though, man? We could have went with something else. I mean, there's a lot of cities that 1,007 miles. Because I'm thinking like El Paso's.
We thought it would look better going to a different state than just staying in Texas.
But that is interesting, and that's impressive. So, in, as far as PQI and these terms, I do think, you know, the system evaluating and having something that does it in a fair way, like you mentioned, is the best way to make sure we're putting our taxpayer money in the right, spending the right way. So, thank you, guys.
Sir, thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
And I would just say, before we go looking at, I guess, increasing the PQI, I would much rather address the streets that are subpar first and put the money towards that of anything that we review on budget. I will also, I got a question on the last slide. Just so the city now is doing their own chip seal?
No, not chip seal. We're preparing, we're filling a crack. Yeah, we're doing the dig-out and patch. We're doing the repairs to the roadway before the chip seal and the overlays are done.
Okay. I will say, the last time we did the chip seal, not this one that would happen, but the one before that, I got a lot of complaints about them spraying.
We did too. Yeah.
We liked the guy that did it last year.
Yes. We'd like to keep him coming.
That one was great. I didn't get, but the one before that, I kept, I got a lot of calls on that. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. So, I think we would ask Mr. Archer that if you would do a little bit of investigating on PQIs in other communities, and that we might reevaluate that. I'd love for you to email us that slideshow, if you would. I think that was helpful information. And then, do we have anything else?
The map of?
Oh, and the map for where the under 45 roads are. And if there's any creative way to not do it as a bond, I understand what you're saying, that it is just a significant chunk. If there was a way to take a small bite out of an elephant, like as we, you know, just routinely looked at that, that would be lovely if there were any creative options. I know it's all just money. I get it. But, yep.
One thing I'd like to offer, and, Dwayne, to ask if you could prepare in response to some of the questions about remove, talking about, we can, we can create something that shows the number of roads that are old dirt that need to be converted and come up with the cost estimate. That's not difficult. We've done that before. But, Dwayne, I think I'd like to ask to give council some understanding of PQI once we do the conversations about other cities. If we can run some model adaptations about what maintaining that and what the funding levels would be in an annual basis, I think when they, when you start looking at that. The other thing that I would tell you, we've discussed for years and looked at different ideas of, hey, boy, we could do a lot more roads if we had a, if we had a overlay machine, a lay-down machine that we could do ourselves. Labor's very difficult to get on those. They turn over all the time. It's an art. My opinion from past experiences was, I didn't think we could feed the machine enough asphalt financially. And so, it is a balancing act. And I do think the reason that the roadway improvements have happened is because the capabilities of the Streets and Drainage Division compared to 20 years ago, they're just not the same department anymore. But...
To piggyback off Mary Shihara, I can't remember which one of my friends is on a different city council, but they said that, like, some of these citations and fees and stuff that, I forgot what city it was. I wish I could remember. I'll get back to you. But that they would take partial of those funds and put into a road fund. That way, that way, there was more money being funneled there, and then they would use those funds. And then, if they needed additional, then they would go to the general operating budget or that nature. Again, stupid question, but, Mr. Archer, you are very bright. So, I know that you can probably help us figure out, like, what that could look like for us, coming up with our own, like, separate budget item that where we pick from, maybe things of that nature to have that creative approach to servicing our roads. And thank you, Rollin, for also saying I would like a list of all my old streets. I know the majority of...
We'll get that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next is zoning items. Michael Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor Ishihara.
Just going to say Ms. Choi.
You got me first.
Okay. All right. Come on.
Thank you, Mayor Ishihara, members of council, Mr. McPhee. The item that we have before you, we're requesting you to approve an abandonment and conveyance of the city's interest in a portion of Delia Drive. This is the last step for us to execute the closing of the acquisition of the new Delia Drive property. This would be recommending the current Delia Drive, what we're going to call the Old Delia Drive right-of-way. That would allow the abandonment, closure, and conveyance of our interest in that property once the new roadway is completed. That would be the final condition on all of our discussions with the, with the property owner and allow that, would allow that project to move forward. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Shirley? A public hearing is required for this item. I will open the public hearing at this time, but I do not have any citizen comment cards. Would anyone like to comment? I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Zoning item is approved. Zoning item B, Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Mr. McPhee. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit for permanent outdoor amusement for pickleball courts within general retail zoning district. A specific use permit is required for this use within general retail zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. In 2004, this property was rezoned to general retail with a stipulation that an eight-foot fence be installed. So, the applicant is proposing to install two pickleball courts. This item was tabled at the last, was tabled at the September Planning and Zoning Commission meeting in order to hold a neighborhood meeting with the adjacent neighbors. And so, from that meeting, that was held on October the 1st, the neighbors and the applicant did agree to keep the eight-foot fence that's already there, as long as it's in good condition, and that all lighting will be down shielded and directed away from any adjacent residential. That drainage would be also directed away from any adjacent homes and reviewed by our engineering staff. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Are there any questions, Ms. Choi?
I just have a question. On the zoning meeting, they had asked about the lights. What direction will those be facing?
Away from the residential.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Down shielded and away from.
Okay.
Is there any hours of operation that they can be out there? Is there any limit to that?
We don't... We, we don't typically regulate hours of operation. And so there is no hours of operation that we regulate, but I believe Mr. Bailey did say that they would stop playing tennis, or pickleball, sorry, at 10:00 PM.
And that was, and that was fine with the adjacent properties?
That, yes, they were fine with that. Yes, sir.
That's all. Thank you.
Okay. This item requires a public hearing, which I will open at this time. I do not have any citizen comment cards. Is there anyone that would like to comment and fill out a card? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item is approved. Zoning item C, Ms. Choi.
Thank you. So the city of Longview is requesting to rezone this property, also known as the Bivens Edition, located north of Cotton Street and MLK, from heavy commercial seen here in this zoning map, to single-family six zoning district. Currently, there are several single-family homes within this subdivision, along with a few churches, that are allowed within single-family zoning district. Staff has had several requests for people to build single-family homes within this neighborhood. In order to allow this, staff is requesting a rezone of all these properties to bring them into compliance with current codes and to allow property owners to build more single-family homes within this area. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses. And Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for Ms. Choi? Public, go ahead.
I have a question. Was this brought by a particular developer, or?
No, sir.
I'm sorry?
This is staff-driven. Yes, sir.
Staff-driven?
Yes, sir.
Really?
We've asked, we've asked, I've.
Staff-driven?
We've asked, because there's a lot of areas where there is, from the change in the UDC, that made people in, that had houses that were in conform, not conforming zoning, and says to bring them into conforming. Right, Angela?
Yes, that is correct. So, so if you have a house in this neighborhood, and you were wanting to renovate the home, because you are in heavy commercial zoning district, you would not be allowed to do this, do this without rezoning. And so instead of every property owner coming in to do a rezone, staff is initiating a rezone of the entire neighborhood to make them into compliance. And so they won't have issues with financing, they won't have issues if they were to pull a permit to remodel a home. And so this would fix a lot of those issues.
How does this affect the railroad that runs through there as well? Because this initially probably was heavy commercial because of the railroad that runs through that neighborhood.
So we are just rezoning just the residential properties. We, we are not rezoning the railroad property. Not sure.
Or near the railroad property, yes.
Yeah.
Residential that they slated for development that never occurred. And now there's more residential wanting to cut back, so this is just not consistent.
I have a question.
I support it. I mean, I think it's great.
Okay. Go ahead.
Is there sewer there?
This, this is an existing neighborhood. There's water, sewer, fire hydrants, all within.
They're going to have to bore underneath the railroad.
I'm sorry?
That they probably couldn't get a permit for. Was it, was it a piece of property right in there that, that?
No, this was way south. This was.
Okay.
They're saying so that they don't have to take out permits to redo their housing. They're trying to.
Mr. Fertile.
I didn't understand that.
The railroad is another whole discussion, another whole town hall meeting.
A public hearing is required for this item, which I will open at this time. I do not have any speaker cards. Would anyone like to speak on this item?
I move to approve.
Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. Come on up, and we'll get you a speaker card.
Hello, I'm Daphne Kratos. I was born in that neighborhood. My mother is 96, and she still lives there. And we always have a problem with the railroad. Anytime there's a train on the track, I call with no response. But anyway, it's another story. I'm glad to see that they're trying to build it up. And we've always been told that the railroad would buy all of this out. So I'm just glad to hear that there's going to be some type of improvement. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much. I will, yep, I close the public hearing, and I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Zoning item is approved. Thank you so much. We are moving on to items of community interest. Mr. Crowley, you're up first.
Really happy to share a lot of things that are happening in Pine Tree area and District One. Number one, we're in a, Friday night, we have a playoff game against Bridge City. And I think it's, we're currently nine and one, seventh-ranked team in the state. We get to host the playoff game because of that record. And so really proud of the, not just the, the team, but the community really coming together. So anybody that's looking for something to do on Friday night, come out to Pirate Stadium and support Longview, Texas. Last Friday, and of course, Veterans Day on Monday, I just would like to say that I'm so proud of the community that comes together to honor our veterans. Our country would not be what we are without, and not only our veterans, but also teaching our young people the reverence of those men and women that fought for our country and continue to fight for our country. That's the foundation. And I love that we, we had a ceremony where we had, the entire school district was involved with that, and all our kids and community were there. It was very special. And I think that's one of the things that makes our community great and makes our country the best country in the world. Saturday night, we have, this is the third year we've done this, we have a Pine Tree ISD Hispanic Heritage Festival. And it kind of started with an idea of who cooks the best tamales. And there's a tamale contest. So if you, if you think you can win, you don't have to be a part of Pine Tree. Come on out there and bring your tamales, and there's a, sorry, I can't.
Tamales, Mr. Crowley.
Si, si. Gracias. But first prize, $300. $300, $300.
Let's have the city council tamale cooker.
Well, no, I want to see the council panel judge, like we all.
But we also have a lot of, you know, it's just a great thing with our, a lot of our kids get involved in just a way to, just make everybody feel like they're part of the community. And anybody's welcome of that. I've got more. We had, the last time I was here, I talked about our Fall Fest. We've done this since I've, I guess, since I've been here. We did it on a Saturday in October, and we give out free hot dogs, there's games. It was just an incredible day on a Saturday afternoon, beautiful weather. And we, we just, I just want to honor the way that we want to make our, you know, you know, for about 10 bucks, you can come out, feed your family, and have some fun, and, and have a way, you know, we've done some, we've had discussion here about kids and families, and I think that's what makes a, a community, a neighborhood, and Longview what it is and why it's a special place. And then, I got one more, I think. Well, I just knew that picture. And then, the last thing is our 12 strays of Chris mutts. And, you know, the Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center, great facility. So Saturday, December 7th, from 4 to 6, if you want to come up and with a donation, you can get your picture made with your pet and Santa. And I think that's, it's hosted by Longview Paws, and I just appreciate that open house and a way to celebrate what's, what's happening there for animal care and adoption, and then just also, in the spirit of giving. Maybe you can walk away with your own pet, like Mr. Newsted did a few weeks back. But thank you, guys.
Good plug. Ms. Moore?
I have nothing.
Mr. Wayne?
Yes, ma'am. It's that time of year, you know, this is one of the great times of the year where we're able to gather and celebrate Thanksgiving, and this is our community Thanksgiving dinner. It's happening at Broaden Recreation Center on Thanksgiving Day. And this event is open to the entire city of Longview, and you'll be amazed at the friends you meet and the people that come out and support that. So please come out, everyone. This year, the 2025 Unity honors a Lifetime Achievement Award, recognizing residents who have demonstrated leadership in promoting unity, mutual understanding, and social justice. It's a great line of people that have accepted this award, and this is one of Longview's really good, feel-good events of the year. They're accepting nominations through November 18th, so please recommend someone from the community. And Mayor, if you don't mind, I have one other announcement to make.
Sure.
And I can't let this day go without recognizing our Longview Lobos, who are planning to play off tomorrow. District champions. Yes, go Lobos. Woo-hoo! Game starts tomorrow, 7:00 PM, at Lobo Stadium. The mighty Longview Lobos are taking on Neyman Forest. And it's Green Out Night, inviting everyone out to support our Longview Lobos. Thank you, Mayor Mac. That's it.
Thank you. Not Mayor Mac, but you're welcome. Mr. New's that good. I forgive you.
Mayor Ishihara.
You always reminded yourself on saying her name correctly.
You say it better than I do.
I'm so sorry, oh, man.
Awesome. So actually, I'm, actually, on the way here, I dropped off the books from the library, at the library to drop off, so to void fines. But if you did not make it in time, and you have fines, Longview Library is doing their Food for Fines. And so they're accepting food donations through November 20th as part of their Food for Fines program. Every donation of a non-expired canned or boxed Thanksgiving-themed food item is worth $1 of waived fines up to $20. You can get more information about the program at longviewtexas.gov/foodforfines. Thank you. That's all.
Okay. Ms. Gamble?
So first, I'd like to acknowledge our Girl Scouts who are here, Ms. Andrea Perez and Melinda Carter. I didn't have a slide for this, but they're actually working with Mr. Albertson to take on beautifying the Leaders Corps Park, so they can be a safe space for foster kids to go through the Costa Get Together Safely program. So we're grateful for them. Plug for the Girl Scouts. There are lots of Girl Scouts, and they each have to get 40 hours to get their gold awards. So if you want to contact them, Melinda Carter is your lady. I also didn't have a slide for this, but I got so enthralled into Hispanic Heritage Month, that's not over. But thank you, Mary Ishihara, she said during the State of the City. I have asked for the most proclamations to date out of any council member. And a lot of those were to honor our Hispanic community. So thank you for helping us honor various events that have been happening throughout the city, various individuals. And so thank you for giving me that privilege. Okay. Let's give thanks, Longview. Ay que dar gracias. We need your donations and help, helping hands as we compile 1,000-plus Thanksgiving food boxes for needy families in our community. The Food Drive collects Thanksgiving grocery items for needy families on the Monday before Thanksgiving. Distribution to be pre-approved families occurs on Tuesday. Learn more at longviewthanksgiving.com. Christmas in the Piney Woods, a holiday shopping event put on by the Junior League. I'd also give the special shout-out to Bethany Nolan for spearheading this project. The funds from this program actually go into programs for our community in the form of some grants. So the Junior League's given over $100,000 in grants in the last couple of years to various community partners. So if you go and attend this event, please go. There's breakfast with Santa, other things. You can learn more information on the Junior League page. And while we're talking about Christmas, I think the mayor will talk about it, but don't forget Coats for Kids is this weekend as well. So please, thank you, Mary Ishihara, for the work that you did to help Longview Community Ministries collect those coats. We appreciate you. Happy birthday, Chief Hooton. I know you're not here, but it's your birthday. Everyone, make sure to tell Chief Hooton happy birthday. And she has spearheaded the GLOW program. I had the privilege of attending that luncheon. And a couple of fun facts about the GLOW program is, they have had over $2.3 million in grant funding. The GLOW Collaborative includes Gregg County, the city of Longview, which serves as the backbone organization for the initiative, Krista's Good Shepherd Health Systems, Longview Regional Medical Center, Community Health Corps, Special Health Resources, and the Greater Longview United Way. Well, on this point, they joined the collaborative in the spring of 2023. Created in 2020 with the supportive grant from Episcopal Health Foundation, GLOW is initially focused on necessary interventions with high utilizers of our emergency services, who either call 911 or self-report to emergency departments rather than accessing more appropriate areas of assistance. These individuals might call 911 for a variety of reasons, many of which fall within social determinants of health categories and/or access emergency departments at Longview's two hospitals, once again, for non-emergent reasons. This program has taken off so much that they're actually being studied by the University of Texas at Tyler, and the state of Texas, and the White House has given recognition to Longview, Texas for this initiative. And so we are amongst good people. So thank you, guys, for your hard work and efforts to not only saving taxpayer money, but making sure that people who call emergency services are being taken care of. Thank you.
Ms. Fertile?
That's for me.
I talked for him.
You gave your time. Yes.
Yes, my mother is in town visiting. I don't ever get an opportunity to do this. So, hi, Mom.
Hi, Dad. I wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to not only serve as your mayor, but to present the State of the City yesterday. Appreciate all of council that was there. Appreciate your time and your support, all of city staff that was there. It was more fun than I thought it was going to be, and so appreciate you guys. You can view that on all the city stuff. Thanksgiving, our city offices will be closed next, not next week, two weeks from now, Thursday, October 28th, and Friday, October 29th. There is no city council meeting, the fourth Thursday in October, so we'll see you back in December. The sanitation for that week, if you have trash collected on Thursday, that will be collected on Friday after Thanksgiving, so push back one day from Thursday to Friday. Join us for the Christmas tree lighting. That is Saturday, November 23rd, at Heritage Plaza from 4 to 7. That'll be a very fun event, very family-friendly. Please make it out there to join us. And the Christmas parade is coming up, Thursday, December 5th, starting 6:30 PM in downtown Longview. You probably already have your spot, but please be aware, there is a new route this year due to the parking facility from Gregg County that is on Tyler Street. So there will be a slightly different route, if you want to look ahead of time and plan where you're going to park. Yes. I am done.
I'd just like to congratulate Mary Ishihara, being honored by the Boys and Girls Club at the luncheon last week.
Thank you, thank you for being there. I really appreciate that. Man, thank you. Appreciate you, guys. Meeting is adjourned. Good job, team.